I don't know.
Good morning, welcome to the Delaware County Council Meeting of October 27th, 2020, at nine o'clock. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ron, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Charlie Xander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Thank you. And again, questions from the public can be directed to the email address that was set up for those public questions, countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. Again, that's county council, d i s t at c o dot delaware dot i n dot u s. Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
And advertised?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Need a motion for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan, any discussion on that? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, and approval of the minutes, and we had minutes from special council meeting on September the 16th, council meeting on September the 22nd, and the special council meeting on October 21st. Can we just approve those together?
October 21st or first?
First. Did I say 21st? October 1st. Bill, is it okay to just approve those all three together? Okay, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ryan, second from Jane. Any discussion on that, corrections, changes?
It's always the paramedic.
Yeah.
Is that it? Back row? All right. I need a roll call, Steve, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Did you say yes, Jane?
She did.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay. We are on to the transfer.
Okay, the first four, I'm gonna read them all together if that's okay for you guys.
That's fine.
Because they're all communications center. Okay. Communication Center, 177, education incentive plus $277. 326 transportation minus $277. 194 training plus 500. 365 T-line minus 500. D-122, communication tech plus 6,25170. C-122, communication tech minus 6,25170. 231 maintenance supplies plus 500. 326 transportation minus 500. Total request zero. Move to approve?
Yep.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ron. Any discussion on that? These were approved at the Finance Committee meeting on there, and Paul called me and said he's not gonna be here today, and I let him know that we'd go ahead and present those.
Motion to approve.
We already got it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, though. Save it for the next one. Steve, could I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Family support, 109, for the assistant, minus $636.10. A-109, plus $636.10. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from, was that Larry?
Yeah.
Second from Jessica. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, jail, I've got quite a few changes here, so. First line, C-123 is now minus $7,411.33. D-123 is plus $7,4133. 196, holiday is now $21,350. 225 inmate clothing, minus 3,000. 226 uniforms, minus 7,500. 362 equipment repair, minus 7,000. 371 contracts, plus 2,000. The next line, 393 schooling, is now minus $5,850. Total request zero.
Donna, what was that, holiday overtime again?
Uh, 21,350.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Okay. Any discussion on that? If not, I'll have a roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Treasurers Office, 325 printing, minus 3,441 furniture and computers, plus 3,000. Total request zero. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public Defender's Office, 186 attorney fees, plus 5,000. 313 psychological testing, minus 5,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ron, second from Jessica. Donna, can you, these, these amounts were, okay, these were already on there, it was the other ones that we, okay, we'll get to that in a minute, yeah, we. Any questions on that? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Public Defender's supplemental, 186 attorney fees, plus $1,850. File maintenance, 184, minus $250. 314 witness fees, minus 1,000. 324 dues and subscriptions, minus 300. Travel expenses, 323, minus 300. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion on that? Roll call, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Uh, Health Department, which was tabled, do we have to?
We'll have to, I think we'll have to remove that from the table. It's on the finance agenda. If, why don't we get a motion to remove that from the table, then we can discuss it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Ron, second from Jessica to remove this line item from the table from last month. Roll call, Steve, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Board of Health, 104, and Bureau Health Specialists, minus 20,000. 196 overtime, plus 20,000. Total request zero.
Now, Bill, we have that removed from the table, do we need any kind of action to?
You already had a motion.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's already a motion to approve the 20,000 for Board of Health, and this is supposed to be reimbursable through cares, I think, is that what, okay, what Jamie had indicated? Any questions on that? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the transfer addendum. Communication Center, F-121, minus 5,001.36. E-121, plus 5,001.36. I-108, minus $1,735. The next one should say F-109, minus $6,935. 196 overtime, plus 33,670. 367 Telephone Backup Center, minus 25,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ron. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public Defender Insurance, I should say 190, account 193 instead of 194. That's 30,000. Attorney fees, 186, plus 23,000. Transcript fees, 185, plus 250. Contract attorneys, 312, plus 6,750. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Larry. On that, any questions from council? On the, just an explanation, on the, Donna and I had talked, and on the financial agenda, there was a higher amount that we'll get to next, but that's, that's going to be reduced because we asked them to go back and look to see where else they could find money, and Donna should get all the credit for this, because she went back and looked at the insurance and figured that there was a little bit too much in that line item, we were able to get that reduced, to reduce the amount that we'll have to take from general fund on the finance agenda. Anyway, that's the explanation. Any other questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Election Board, 142. 103 Deputy Election Commissioner, minus 7,000. 199 overtime, minus 4,000. 104 absent voter board, plus 2,000. 105 absent voter board, plus 3,000. 106 absentee voter board, plus 3,000. 107 absentee voter board, plus 3,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Motion, oh, go ahead. Motion from Jessica, and go ahead, Ron. Did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, second from Ron. I didn't know if I let you finish. Any discussion? Roll call, Steve.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, financial agenda, this I have.
I got one more on the back.
What?
Sorry about that. Okay, Sheriff, 135 Lieutenant, minus $9,804.3. B-135 Lieutenant, plus $9,804.3. 121 Sergeant. B-121, minus 7,502.70. C-121 Sergeant, plus 7,502.70. C-114 Corporal, minus $6,838.51. D-114 Corporal, plus $6,831.51. A-132 Deputy, minus $6,487.45. B-132 Deputy, plus $6,487.45. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from?
Ryan.
Is that Ryan? Okay.
Sheriff's representing here.
Yeah, Sheriff's here.
Sheriff's here. Well, I just thought it'd be good for the record for the public to know what was going on there, with all those changes.
Want to explain that? We discussed this in Finance Committee, but.
I just think it'd be good, good for the record.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. Early summer, Greg Ellison, who was a longtime lieutenant, retired. So once his time ran out on the books, we just filled that promotion, that spot, so we promoted a sergeant to lieutenant, which opened a sergeant spot. We promoted a corporal to sergeant, which opened a corporal spot. We promoted a patrolman to corporal. So that's where you get all of the openings for the rank, is because one person retired.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Just, I think there was some discussion in Finance, were you not gonna fill that deputy's position for a while yet? Are you holding off on that?
The next academy class starts February 15th. So we were planning on filling that probably mid to late January, so that line, that patrolman line stays open from October 1st till mid-January.
Well, and I think that's what you've kind of done, because the academy dates have, there are less of them, is that correct? And they've been?
There are less openings in the academy. They went from three people per bedroom to two people, which reduces the size by one-third, so it's harder to get people into the academy now. So the wait is longer, yeah.
So what you're, what you're doing, you're watching for an opening, and then you hire to, once you have the opening?
Hire just previously, as opposed to, I mean, technically, we could have hired in the October Mayor Board meeting, and that person would have been on the books for four months before they went to the academy. We've changed up the way our FTO program is, so now that line stays open longer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, now, okay, Public Defender, 185 transcript fees, that 15,000 has been withdrawn. Excuse me. 186 attorney fees, 23,000. 312 contract attorneys, that 15,000 has been withdrawn. Total request is 23,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second by Ron. Any questions on that? I know in Finance Committee, and prior to, when the, when the requests came in, we've looked for other places to come up with, well, the total, I think, was 53 in there, and we found some of it, but this is what we're left with, so. Any questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Data Processing, IJS, plus Data Processing IT, those 10,000s have both been withdrawn. So we are down to edit. 310 Edit Projects, 2,788,000. Total request, 2,788,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, a second from Larry?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay, all right. Any questions on that? These are edit bills that are, that are due, is that right, for the rest of the year?
It's appropriations to get me through till the, till the end of the year, and then in edit, whatever's left in that account, I can encumber the appropriation, because it's ongoing. So we'll be back probably, I guess, in probably February, March, appropriate next year's money.
Okay, any, any questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Diversion, ADR Courts, 311. Contract Services, 1,150. Total request, 1,150.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica? Larry?
Yeah.
Second from Larry? Okay.
Ron's gonna let me in.
I heard, I heard coming from two, two spots out there. Any questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
GIS COVID grant, 221 gasoline, $400. 311 contractual services, 3,600. Total request, 4,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ron. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
MVH restricted, 233, by 10 minutes, 800,000. Total request, 800,000. Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, a second from Ryan. Any discussion on that? Want to kind of explain where this is coming from and where it's going?
Yes.
Yep.
Cary Di County Highway. So our MVH money, half of it can be used for repairs, employees, things like that. The other half is restricted, and this is the restricted part, it can only be used on roads. No employee cost, no equipment cost, anything like that. So this is just strictly for materials.
And your, your plan is to pave until the weather will not allow you to pave?
Until the first snowfall, we're hoping.
All right, that sounds good.
I'd like to make a comment about that, just for the public's interest, since we're on camera here. Motor Vehicle Fund used to be 100% dollars to operate the Highway Department, and a few years back, there was a big push by the state to counties to create a wheel tax. We at Delaware County finally succumbed to that pressure and voted for a wheel tax. A wheel tax is supposed to all go on the roads. Now, the quote-unquote "state" has decided that only half the motor vehicle money can be used to operate the Highway Department, and the other half has to go to roads. So they've not only switched their priority back to motor vehicle, but they've put a little bit of a, so I'd say it's a restriction, it's a control. My opinion is that it's a result, and this is an opinion, can't prove it, but it's a result of lobbies from private paving companies to get this money used for their contracts, because the County Highway not only has to, to use this money there, but if there's a project that comes up, they have to bid the project in a sense, is that right, Cary? You have to quote the clause?
That is correct. A lot of counties don't have the equipment or the manpower to pave the road, so everything is contracted out. We have the equipment to do it, but, you know, if something breaks down, or we need a new piece of equipment, that has to come from the half that is non-restricted, which doesn't leave you a lot of money for that, then.
Yeah, that cuts into payroll real quick.
So you're saying the state's restricting a certain amount that you can use for what?
Yes, 50% of the money, so.
Every month, we have to split whatever, if it's 50,000 for the month, half goes highway, half goes into restricted.
Now, see, if we didn't have the capabilities of doing our own paving, and we contracted it all out, well, then, that 50% would all go for that, but you wouldn't get near the amount of paving with a contract that you are with the employees that we currently have.
That's tough. I think this is another example of the state kind of regulating more than what they need to, and I think I've been pretty vocal about that, but, I mean, it doesn't help you guys out at all.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
Or the county, or the residents within the county. So I'd publicly, I'll publicly state that. The state just needs to leave us alone a little bit.
Well, the motor, the wheel tax was supposed to earmark 100% to roads. Larry will verify that, he was around when it happened. I voted against the wheel tax the first time. Went to a regional meeting that the state legislature put on, over at Marion, to hear all about this stuff, and then now I'm finding that they've put out a new rule that, again, restricts our use. And at one time, I, I was not a proponent of doing a lot of local paving, but our commissioners, over the years, approved it. I think back when maybe Tom Bennington was on councils when they first bought another paving machine, we just had an old Conter. And they're doing a wonderful job, so I don't get this, I don't get it at all. But I think the public should know about it. That's why I brought it up.
All I was doing was just reiterating something there. It really puts you guys in a bind when you're restricted, so.
Yes, absolutely.
It does, because it could come to a point where they got money over restricted, but they don't have money in the regular MVH to pay the employees to do the restricted. It's getting tight, I mean, she's happened to work.
It is tight.
Her employees, her benefits and everything.
Yeah, because out of the non-restricted, you have to pay all your liability, all building and grounds, all your maintenance, your fuel, all the employees. So what you used to get, say, $5 million, well, now you only get two and a half. Just, that's just an example, and it adds up quickly.
Thanks, Ron, for bringing that up. I want to make sure we, we voted on that, didn't we? The 800,000 for the Batuminus?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't? Okay, all right. I was thinking that we did. So we need, any more questions on that?
I do want to actually give you guys some kudos in our area. We had some, some paving and some painting and some things that were done, so highway is working, there's no question about that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cary.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. We're ready, I believe, nothing else, right? Okay, we're ready for the motion.
All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions, and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right, I don't believe we have any committee reports.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Since we no longer have, have our appointments to the visitors bureau, do you want me to stay on that? Do you still want me to?
Those, those appointments that are there currently will expire, and I think we're going to have some discussions here in the, I guess, the off-season, maybe the last two months here, on, on where we go from, from there, but.
I know we still approve our budget, so I.
Yeah, as of right now, they are still meeting, our appointments are still meeting